Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the October twentieth meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. As everyone can see, we have returned to a virtual meeting. This is due to public gathering or public meeting laws and the restrictions placed by COVID nineteen. We will be having this meeting and probably for the foreseeable future, at least until January of two thousand and twenty-two, our meetings returning to to virtual. We still want everybody to have access to all of the applications. Those will be posted along with other information and details by the applicants prior to our meetings. We will have a public comment period. And Ramsey or Ken, can you tell us after tonight how long that comment period is open? After, after we have a meeting? Or is it up until the meeting and including the meeting?
I'm not sure I'm understanding your question, Bill. I mean, for public hearings, the public hearing is the public hearing and when the public hearing is closed, the public hearing is closed unless we keep it open.
Okay, so comments are, well, because the, the town has the applications available prior to the meeting.
Oh.
Comments can be received by the town, town planner Ramsey Boehner up to the meeting and then during the public hearing period.
Yeah, we're gonna have to work out the logistics. I mean, this, this is something that we were just talking about a little bit before we started. That is that there's a brand new law as of yesterday that requires us to post not just the applications, but all matters that the all matters that the board is going to be considering at the meeting, post those twenty-four hours prior to the beginning of this meeting. So I think what we're gonna need to do is have a new cutoff time that will allow us to comply with that law for public comments to be made prior to the meeting. Having said that, at the meeting, when we open a public hearing, of course, the public can comment at that time during the public meeting the public hearing. So, so it's not cutting off comments prior to the public hearing, other than for the purpose of receiving them, distributing them to the board, posting them on our website. Does that sound right to you, Ramsey?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we have a lot of work to do to coordinate it. You know, we just switched from having public hearings in person to go on the virtual. And now we have new rules. So I think we need to understand what those rules are to establish policies and timeframes to adjust to.
All right. All right. So again, tonight, everybody that cares to address an application will be offered that opportunity. Once the planning board members have had an opportunity to review the application, ask our questions of the applicant, we will open up for public comment. And that's, that's been typical whether we're in person or, or virtual. If you, if you don't know how to join the meeting on Zoom, there is a raise hand feature that's across the bottom of your screen. And you're, we have folks who are watching to keep track and let you in to the conversation. If all else fails, wave your arms, turn your camera on and wave your arms frantically and, and we will make every effort to get you in. Let's start out by asking the secretary to call the role tonight, please.
Member Fader?
Here.
Osowski?
Here.
Babcock Steiner? Delaney?
Yeah.
Ford?
Here.
And, and Price?
Here.
Absent is Altman.
Okay. Thank you. A quick welcome to Julie Ford, our newest member. I'm sure gonna learn a lot tonight. We, glad you're on, on the board with us and look forward to, to meeting you in person soon enough. But welcome. Okay, we do have before we talk about the agenda, we do have meeting minutes from our July twenty-first meeting, our August eighteenth meeting. And we will receive and review the September fourteenth meeting minutes in November. So let's go back to July twenty-first and ask if anybody has a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
This is John. I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes from July twenty-first.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Peter seconds.
Fader second. Any discussion? Were there any edits or ads anybody had? All right, Ramsey, call the role, please.
Price?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Delaney? Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
And Fader?
Aye.
I didn't, I didn't reply. I wasn't there in July. So I still.
Okay, that's all right. Abstain. Delaney abstain?
Abstain, yes. Sorry.
Was, was, I don't believe Julie was on the board at that time either.
I was not. So I guess then I should abstain as well. I thought it was just the minutes were read.
All right.
The motion passes?
All right, thank you. See if there's a, does anyone have a motion to approve our August eighteenth meeting minutes?
I'll move. I'll move that we approve the August minutes. I'll second that motion.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion or edits? Anyone add? All right, Ramsey, call the role, please.
Member Price?
Aye.
Fader?
I'm gonna say aye, but I tell you the truth, I can't remember if I was even at that meeting.
You were.
Yes, you, you were.
Okay, then the aye counts.
Uh, Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Abstain, I was not.
I'm sorry, Jason, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Abstain?
Osowski?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right. So our September meeting minutes will review in November. We have several public hearings tonight. Ramsey, can you please confirm if these have been properly advertised?
Yes, they were properly advertised. Excuse me. They're properly advertised in the Well, let's just do a timeout for one sec. I apologize. We said advertised in the Daily Record?
Okay.
On October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Right.
We have a new, new posting.
Right, and that's, that is deemed legal. We, we, we lost the post, right?
Yeah, that we lost the post and that's our new ad. That's why I didn't have it in my notes.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will hear those hearings tonight. We have several that I'd like to announce have been adjourned to our November seventeenth meeting. The first of those is application ten P N B one dash twenty-one. The application of nineteen fifty to nineteen sixty-six Monroe Avenue LLC, also known as Quickleys. This is the gas station on the corner of Monroe and Elmwood. That's been postponed for, or adjourned for a month. Application ten P N B two dash twenty-one. The application of James Tabby, owner for preliminary site plan approval and preliminary EPOD for a single family home at eight thirty Highland Avenue has been postponed. And under our old business application, eight P N B one dash twenty-one, the application of the University of Rochester for concept review at their laser lab facility, two fifty East River Road has also been adjourned to our November seventeenth meeting. So if you are here for any of those applications, just please know that they are won't be heard tonight and have been pushed back to, to November. So our first application that we're going to hear tonight is ten P zero one dash twenty-one. This is the application of Canal View Holdings LLC and RICO management as agent for site plan modification to construct eleven new parking spaces on property at seven 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 Canal View Boulevard. Jeff or Ramsey, do we have somebody representing?
We have Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering.
Matt, good evening.
Hey, everybody. Matt Tomlinson Marathon. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, do you have anyone else joining you, Matt?
Yeah, Joe Scheidel is also here representing RICO. He's on and muted currently, but he can chime in if I miss anything or state anything that needs to be corrected. But as noted, this is a relatively straightforward. One, we're looking to add eleven parking spaces closer to the front door of a new tenant that RICO is moving into the building and currently wrapping up the interior buildout portion. This is a medical practice that services folks who need to be close to the door. And so we're trying to create better accessibility, update the curb ramps and ADA access and parking to current standards. There are currently four ADA spaces within the existing lot. We're leaving two further to the south and relocating to closer to the main entrance here. There are some other tenants within the building. And so that's why the spacing for the ADA spaces is left the way that it is. It's my understanding that the occupation or previous approvals as part of the building permit included formalization of a parking agreement between this property and five hundred Canal View, which was previously taken care of. And so adding these spaces gets us closer to what's required by code, but still below it. And because we have quite a bit of green space on the overall parcel, there are no variances or other things triggered by the addition of these eleven spaces. We are removing a small green space area where these spaces are being added, but maintaining some green at the main drop off or front access point direct to the door and replanting two trees. The landscaping between the sidewalk and the building itself is going to stay or be supplemented by the owner. But everything between the sidewalk and the curb and the area of the parking is going to go and then we will be replanting two trees bracketing that entrance. Drainage patterns are gonna follow exactly where the drainage goes. Now, that lawn and sidewalk area just sheet drains to a couple of inlets in the interior island. And we've added spot elevations and some flow arrows to indicate how that drainage will occur, but all of that's going to be maintained exactly the way that it is today. Overall, this is a nine acre parcel. The aerial on the left-hand side there kind of shows the overall scope of the project and, and just where exactly these eleven spaces are going to fall relative to the building. So that's pretty much it, Joe. I don't know if I missed anything that you guys are looking at, other than I, I think move-in date, they're looking to move in here in the next few weeks. The new tenants, we're trying to squeeze this in prior to the end of the year, end of paving season.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Matt. So as you had mentioned, you know, there is a lot of green space at that property, especially up in the front of the facilities. There really isn't gonna be any, you know, altercations to some of the, the major components of the, of the site and the perception of the building. And we're excited to, to have some, some new folks moving in and leasing some of the space in that office complex. And we've been working diligently to make some improvements and get some businesses and, and some of the things that match some of the, the mission of the, the town to, to get into those, those places and operate in, in Brighton.
So with that, if you guys have any questions, Bill, we'd be happy to answer them. I, I did neglect to mention that I had a phone conversation with the town engineer Everett earlier today, just talking through any forthcoming comments. He did have a few that he shared with me, but nothing that we see as any type of issue in, in finalizing, getting signatures on the plans after approval.
Thank you, Matt, Joe. I, I don't really have many questions as long as the, the town engineer is satisfied on things like drainage. Are you, are you looking at any additional site lighting? As a result, or are there any changes in hours of operation or anything as a result of this new business?
No, not really. It's more of a medical practice. And again, this is just essential to the type of people that are coming there for their appointments, to have ease of access up on that front loop. And it just currently doesn't exist as it is. So the hours of operations for some of the visitors and for some of the patients and people that are coming there will be standard during normal daytime and maybe some Saturday hours. The lighting had just been gone through a week ago on Monday, everything as far as the light posts and fixtures are currently up operational lit. The timer's been adjusted. And we've had sufficient lighting over in that area. There's several posts in the green space there. They're a little bit hard to, to see where they're identified, but it does, it does have cover, coverage in, in and around that area.
Uh, Joe, are you worried about cars parking over the sidewalk? Are you gonna have wheel stops?
Uh, we're gonna have a curb across, across that edge.
Yeah, we, Ramsey, we don't anticipate that. Right now, we're matching the sidewalk width. I know it's a little bit narrower with just the five feet through there, but we will be putting in full depth, six inch curb. Right now, majority of the curb through that area is three or four inches high and, and they do a nice job of folks parking without blocking that.
Well, the reason I bring it up, it's the main entrance to a medical facility. And it's important that the sidewalk be left unopposed or blocking anyone. And the last thing that I have, how will you remain paying the accessible during the construction?
Yeah, so I can speak to that and then Joe can chime in as well. The, as I mentioned, they, the tenants for the new space, the main space that we're dressing up, the parking near their front entrance are not in yet. And we don't, we anticipate this work being completed prior to them moving in. And the portion on the south, they have access from the parking lot to the rear of the building. And there's some ADA accessible there. So Joe will work with those folks to make sure from a sequencing standpoint that they have access maintained, but it should not be an issue during construction.
Yeah, that's correct, Matt. And we do have additional entrances in the back of the facility that will in the future be primarily for just the employees that work for the practice. But in the meantime, there's, there's several other options for, for accommodating folks to make sure that we can get them in and out of there. Plus, with the move-in date and the tenant coming in soon, there'll be a little bit of transition time for that organization and stuff. And, and, and we have got, you know, other entrances and things that we can use to accommodate with to make things easy for everybody.
And relative to the wheel stops, Ramsey, we are maintaining the main access, if you will, from the drive aisle, bringing the sidewalk and a ramp out. And Joe and his folks are actively managing this. So if that becomes an issue, wheel stops could always be added in the future. And I'm sure Joe will be the first one to hear about it if there are some issues out there with the walks.
Yeah, and Matt, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we're gonna go with the, with the standard height curb. I, I have some other offices where we have installed wheel stops and other things. And sometimes with the plowing and, and with snow and other stuff, they're, they're hard to see or they end up in a pile and, and other things. So anything that's permanent, like the curb design actually seems to be more durable and the longevity of that. And, and the fact that you can see it, we can maintain it and clean it easily is, is a benefit, I believe.
Hey. Thank you. Other board members. I guess I'll just look at you. Jason, do you have any questions, comments?
I'm all set.
All right, I see. Julie, do you have questions or comments? All right. Pam, do you have any questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, and John?
Yeah, I have a question. Is, is the developer okay with snow storage when you do have to plow this up, the parking lot and the driveway out in the winter?
Yeah, we should be perfectly fine with that. In fact, on that property, Matt, or if someone wants to scan over to the overall site plan, the overhead shot with the satellite, you'll see that this parcel in the, in the back, it's, there's just green space at the edge that goes into what I'll call a hydro. Plus, in the lower left-hand corner, there's actually, yes, right there, there's some space. That's, that's at, at, at grade level. It doesn't have any trees or anything in there. And it looks like in the past, before we purchased the property, that there were some light posts and some drainage and stuff already in there in case additional parking was to be added later. So we have got several areas around this property and the wooded area that, that we own or have access to for pushing, pushing snow into. So removal is not, not really an, an issue for that. Plus, I, I have the property behind that five hundred Canal View, which is just north of this drawing with wooded area and everything else as well. So we've got a lot of push-off space for snow with no issues.
All right, good. Thank you. And tell me, is there, is there any opportunity to put a bicycle rack somewhere conveniently in case anybody decides to ride their bike to work there?
Yeah, and actually, you know, we have got that at, at a lot of our offices. You know, I'll check with the tenants and the management team to see if that's something that they'd like in the front of the facility. Or more than likely in the back of the facility, we have employee entrances actually for almost all of the tenants, being the shape of that building, the L shape with the ninety degrees. Everybody has an emergency exit door and/or employee entrance off the back of the facility. So I've got some great areas in the back, in the, the, the upper corner of the ninety, the outside where we've got a tree that we just planted in the top, top left corner. And we've got sidewalk all the way around with several areas that I can add, add some bike racks to. Yes.
Great, thank you.
And David? Fader?
I'm okay with it.
All right. Did I get everybody? Yep. Ken Gordon, any, any questions? All right, and Ramsey?
I'm all set. Thank you, Bill.
All right. All right, Matt and Joe, thank you. Jeff, we're gonna open this up for public comment and see if there's anybody that's joining the meeting tonight that wishes to address this application. Let us know if, if you see anybody.
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay.
Anyone?
All right. Thank you. All right, if anybody does wish to address this, we can, we can come back, but let's move on to the next application, same applicant. Application number ten P zero two dash twenty-one. This is Canal View Holdings LLC owner and Leo J Roth Corporation agent for site plan modification to install and buy generator at property located seven 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 Canal View Boulevard. I guess Matt, is it Matt or is it Joe?
Um, yeah, actually, is the, with the ownership for that, with RICO management, I can speak to that. And I wasn't sure, did we have anybody else on from Leo J Roth on here?
Who would that be? Would that be Derek Lee? No? Jay Stoops?
No.
Have you seen anyone raising their hand to speak?
Yeah, and I, I can, you know, help, help field this application as well.
Okay. Let's continue.
Please go ahead. Go ahead, Joe.
All right. So in general, at the facility, again, we've had a, a couple of tenants vacate earlier this year, and we've had a couple of spaces inside that facility that have been vacant for several years. And the good news is, is that we're bringing several businesses into that particular location. This one that's moving in is actually in the upper right section, or we'll say right section, a little bit lower. And they're gonna be a, a technology organization that's, that's moving into that space. And part of their requirements for their IT infrastructure and for their server room is to have a, a small dedicated generator to, to provide emergency power backup to, to their IT server room. The location of the generator is right where, where the hand is and the marker there. And what we're looking for is Leo J Roth to perform the, the piping and gas installation into the facility. I've already got gas equipment further along that wall on the, to the left of where the proposed location is. And there's actually already some penetrations into the facility that would be tied into above the ceiling grid. And we do have another tenant that already has a small generator, very similar in size and capabilities on the other side of the facility. Where you can see if you scroll to the left and down a little bit, right, it'll say generator. Yep, so, so same type of thing, just an emergency standby generator running off of natural gas, something small for, for a small tenant's IT needs.
Jeff, do you, do we have anything on the, on the generator itself with regard to the model or the, the manufacturer?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. John Osowski, this is where I'm out of my league and
Yeah, I will say that that is very similar to what you would have as a residential model. That's just how small that, that we're talking about. It almost doesn't even look commercial in, in appearance. And the, the amount of power and output is generally low load device with an enclosure that you'd see similar to residential where it's an attractive enclosure as pictured there. It's gonna be low as far as the, the volume and the decibels. And it's really just to keep some, some critical components up and running for the business.
Yeah, this is John. I'm trying to read the specs on it and they're, they're kind of light on my, on my screen, so I'm having trouble looking at it. But I, I, I'm familiar with, you know, Honeywell Generac is typically a residential grade. So it, yeah, they, they make those fairly quiet purposes.
You know, Joe, do you know what the decimal level is? You know, Joe, do you know what the decimal level is?
It's probably on. Let's see if we can.
Oh, yeah, Jeff saw pointing it out.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's that's it. It looks like it's 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 pretty low.
Is it the 14, 18, or 10,000 watts?
If you scroll up, do we have another sheet that was in the in the submittal? To just confirm the the one that was was proposed.
They're all shown.
I think I think on the specification sheet, they were all pretty close as far as the decibel limit, which 14 KW is the size of it.
Yeah, I was just trying to get the decimal level, but you're not. It looks like from the previous shot that Jeff showed us. It looked like both of or at least two of them would hit 65 decimal levels but not exceed it.
Correct.
And then the 100 watt would be 61, and that's all within code, so.
Okay.
If you make any changes, you need to let us know.
Yep, obviously, we'll we will, but I believe we're gonna stick to the specifications here.
Okay. Jeff, thanks for pulling that up. Are you proposing any screening or enclosure for the generator?
No, actually, I think what we did is we picked an enclosure that that's shown there that that actually is somewhat attractive. They're you know, in appearance and stuff in it and, you know, comparatively to transformers and phone enclosures and other things. I think it's, you know, it's 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 not a nice word by any means for the facility.
I have no other questions.
I don't either. John, are you you said?
Yeah, yeah. Are there any any provisions being made or consideration to have protective bollards around the generators? So the cars don't run.
Yeah, if we go back to the to the to the placement of the unit. And we scroll in, we're we're actually off and and I think we're we're beyond the beyond the curb and up kind of near the facility there. And that's kind of similar to where you know, some of the gas equipment and stuff comes in. It's kind of tucked up near the building. It's inside the curb in a way. And that the curb is the standard height, so I don't really have any concerns about any vehicles getting up or over into the equipment and there isn't really anything that that we would be concerned about if that if that unit, you know, had something get near it. There isn't anything that would be detrimental to to the site really or anything. So it should should be okay where that proposed location is inside the curb. Between the curb and the building.
Okay, thank you.
David Fader, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. How about Pam? Do you have questions? No?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Julie, you have questions?
I have no questions.
Jason? All set? All right. Okay, I believe that's it. Ken or Ramsey, any other questions? All right. Okay. Thanks, Joe. This this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that's joining us tonight that cares to address this application?
I don't see anybody.
All right. All right, Joe, thank you.
Yep, and I'd just like to say thank you all for your time and we appreciate it. And we look forward to to getting some of these new organizations and stuff into the facilities over in that area and bringing some more business back to the Canal View Office Park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our third application of the night. This is 10 P oh three dash 21, the application of 1925 South Clinton LLC for final site plan approval. Phase two to construct two 9,200 square foot retail buildings with drive through facilities and associated site improvements at property located at 1905 through 1925 South Clinton Avenue.
Good evening. Mr. Price, Paul Calucci with the Marco Group. Members of the board, nice to see everybody. Joined tonight by Derek Litch, project manager for Caster Engineering. They're the civil engineers of record for the project that we're gonna be talking about tonight. Just wanted to go back a little bit relative to previous approvals. So this project is, as many of you know, but I know there's some new board members received preliminary overall site plan approval in November of 2017 along with subdivision approval to create three lots which we are referring to here in the overall site plan. 11 acres, the site was underlying zoning was B E L Business Limited. We did an incentive zoning approval, which gave us certain flexibilities relative to uses and sizes of buildings. At the preliminary overall stage, we had a lot one, which was the daycare facility, 11,600 square feet. That is occupied by Doodle Bugs Children's Center. Construction completed in July of 2020, open and operating. Lot two, which was approximately 6.8 acres is the back and and the larger parcel was slated for two medical office buildings, each two stories, totaling approximately 51,700 square feet. And lot three, which is the front was slated was a 2.75 plus or minus acre parcel. It was slated for two buildings, one multi-use tenant building with drive through. And at the time, at the preliminary overall, we showed a 4,500 square foot restaurant building with outdoor dining. And we are back before you with phase two, which is lot three. Minor changes to that include now two 9,200 square foot buildings in lieu of the single 9,200 square foot and 4,500 square foot building. We're showing two drive throughs. We have a lease with Starbucks, which would be the end cap in the northerly building, 2,100 square foot Starbucks Cafe with drive through. That is really the catalyst that allows us to move forward with this next phase. If if you recall, at preliminary overall, we had pretty much fixed driveway positions. We we installed the northerly access, which is opposite Ruudville Boulevard. That's the driveway that's currently there that services Doodle Bugs. We have the southerly access, which has been installed, but signal is not operational at this point for the fourth leg of that intersection. That southerly access is opposite the shopping center, which is anchored by Tops. The two buildings would be serviced by both access points. We would install the rest of the signal equipment for the southerly access, which would make that a fully operational and signalized access. We have parking proposed as shown 98 spaces, which is in excess of the five per thousand that's required. We are limiting the parking to just lot three at this time. Trying to minimize the amount of site improvements as we still have some trying to maintain some flexibility for building sizes and positions in the rear. While at this time, we do believe and we are pursuing medical office users with that would occupy either of the two two story buildings. We have some external influences in the marketplace that we're trying to maintain some flexibility back there where we are looking to potentially have either a single building in the back in the future or two buildings. So trying to maintain some flexibility back there. The utility infrastructure was installed as part of phase one, which includes the stormwater management pond. The pond is in and fully functional. The pond is sized to serve the overall development at full build out. We installed sanitary sewer, which extends from the northwest corner of the property into the site and approximately a third of the way southerly through the site, we would access and extend those utilities for this phase further to the south limits of the property. We are showing on phase two the the drive through facility that has the appropriate stacking or in excess of the required queue amounts. Approximately stack stackings provided for approximately 14 vehicles. We also have potential, we I don't have a lease in hand yet, but we are finalizing agreements with another restaurant user, which would be a sandwich shop that would potentially go adjacent to the Starbucks. The rest of the tenant spaces will be built on spec and are designed to be flexible for various widths of tenants as they would occupy storefronts. The southerly building is shown as a mirror image of the northerly building. And that is set up again for a drive through user as we're out in the marketplace and and talking to potential tenants. There is potential for other drive up or drive through users while we don't think any would be as intense as a Starbucks use that has a very heavy drive through component. Other users could be restaurant or which would require drive through facilities where they would actually have order point and transactions versus other users we've been working with in the marketplace that have simply drive up where there's no transactions or no order point. They simply order online and and have a pickup window. The the project proposes the continuation of the sidewalks and pedestrian element that would connect to the sidewalk that was installed along the South Clinton Ave right away. We also are proposing a garden wall along the the right away, which is a combination of brick piers, ornamental aluminum fence and landscaping that would parallel the right away, essentially a method of trying to break the the line of sight of cars that would be in the stacking lanes that are going to be accessing the drive throughs or drive up windows. We did have, and I submitted along with the application to staff an engineering, updated engineering report. We also recently submitted an updated traffic memorandum where I had the original traffic engineer review the trip generation based on our preliminary overall program versus this where we had previously one drive through user. We are now showing potentially two. So they they took a look at the IT trip generation and produced a traffic memorandum that was submitted to staff. It it results in approximately 17 additional trips in the AM peak hour and 35 in the evening PM peak hour. And that per their opinion, the results and the conclusions of that is would have a negligible effect on the surrounding traffic network. We did look at the overall seeker thresholds and approvals for this project. They're noted on the site plan where we look at each lot and we compared it to the incentive zoning approvals. We do meet the lot coverage, the building coverage, the overall green space setbacks, parking and other requirements, which I alluded to, which is the drive through component. Drive through is an allowable use under the incentive zoning regulations. It's a conditional, I should say, conditional use subject to being able to meet the the standards associated with the the drive through. The two buildings that are proposed, as I mentioned, are mirror images of one another. I submitted elevations and renderings. I do have a a meeting next week with the architectural review board to discuss those elevations. It's a brick exterior finish with a limestone base, precast water table, metal canopies over the storefronts as well as on the sides and rear. The buildings are approximately 20 feet tall. There's a parapet that wraps the buildings that would be used to screen the rooftop mechanical equipment. And generally set up to be flexible for various tenants that would be moving in, hopefully staying. But in in the business we're in, we have to prepare for flexibility with move ins and move outs. So essentially, the as as everyone who was part of the original approvals know, the buildings basically the front or the entrances will face into the development or they'll be facing westerly. So the back of the buildings will face the right of way. And on the other elevation that as you just pushed down, you can see the frontage. So trying to main flexibility for for various tenants of of different sizes. Overall, we're we're excited that we have some momentum to to move forward with this next phase. I know it 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 seems like a lifetime ago and I I look back at some of my notes from when we obtained the original approvals and it's it's been four years and and it amazes me how time goes by, but we're excited to to be able to move forward with Starbucks, which will give us some momentum to continue developing this this project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. I think I'd like to ask, I'm gonna go around and see if other board members have any comments. I guess I don't know where to start. David, do you have any? Any thoughts on this?
I don't know. I'm, well, some of my my thoughts are actually more along the notes that came with the whole thing, like, are they ever gonna remove the pile of dirt? But that's not really, I think, what you're asking.
No, I I I guess, you know, some of us were on here. We have a couple new board members that hadn't seen the previous preliminary approval. I don't know. What are your what are your thoughts on this very auto centric development?
I don't know. I guess. I mean, it's not as it's less attractive, but I'm not sure that I would object to it.
Okay. John Osowski, do you have any any thoughts on it?
Yeah, I've been struggling with it, trying to figure out if they could, you know, turn it 90 degrees, if that might put the parking in the middle between the two buildings, see if that could be some kind of improvement to it, but that'll probably screw up the drive through. I don't know. I'm yeah, I'm yeah, I I'm struggling. I'm struggling with trying to trying to improve it somehow and not coming up with any really good ideas at this point in time. Yeah.
Jason, how about you?
Yeah, I guess one of my concerns is in in maybe I'm, you know, what we're looking at here doesn't.
You seem to have trouble hearing you.
It's it's my laptop and I unfortunately am not able to get a new one right now with at work with the shortage. So let's see, my concern is my immediate concern, and maybe it's just not being shown well on this is the if I remember correctly, we had done a lot of landscaping work along that front edge there where it bordered Clinton Avenue. And it seems like a lot of that is gone and is now being taken up by driveway or by drive through space. And and again, it may just be the one we're looking at there.
Other thoughts? Other thoughts, Jason?
Thanks.
I get, yeah, I get it, I get it. Pam, what about you? Do you have any any thoughts?
I I think the biggest issue that I'm having is approving a second drive through for a tenant that's unknown. I think I'd be okay with a Starbucks drive through since it's a secure tenant and it helps move along the development. I'm having a hard time saying let's just do a drive through in preparation of trying to attract the tenants. I think giving up this single building with outdoor dining for two drive throughs is a real sacrifice. And I think if it was one drive through instead of two drive throughs, we could possibly I shift the building slightly and do something like the Starbucks on Mount Hope that has like the the loop. Doesn't go along the front of the building. I know I had the same front of the building issues with the Starbucks on Monroe. But I would feel a lot better if it was a single drive through, U shaped drive through. And the second building didn't have a drive through and instead got outdoor dining or some type of green space amenity. So I think I think the buffer actually seems okay. I just really am having a hard time saying, let's do a second drive through when we don't have anybody. I mean, maybe there is somebody in mind, but I it's just seems like a stretch, so.
Julie, it's your first, might feel free to give us
Okay, pipe up here and kind of riffing off of the two previous comments. I agree with the second drive through being problematic. Not just because it's unknown, but as a second, as a second drive through with the I the idea of having some sort of green space or outdoor dining in lieu of the second drive through. To me, seems more palatable. But I also do this auto centered development, we do, you know, recognizing the changing dynamics in, you know, like how people are accessing goods and services, that this is becoming increasingly important. But I agree with Pam on the that second drive through is is causes me for pause.
Um, I just noticed it's final site plan approval. For some reason, I thought it was a more preliminary application. So I guess I do have a little bit of a problem with it. I mean, I I I think Bill, you've said in the path that you sometimes like it when they move the buildings closer to the street. But in this case, when they did that, they put like the drive through in front of it. So you don't really see the building, you'll just see the cars going around the drive through, so.
That's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, so kind of like what Pam said, maybe I don't know if I care if there's two of them or not, I mean, but maybe we could spin them ninety degrees or do something else so they're not, you know. I mean, if this is a last chance to comment, I I kind of think it was a a change to much less appealing.
Can I say something else too?
Please.
This is back to when Julie, when Julie was just mentioning about like the changing, you know, the changing world and how it's becoming auto centric. I was looking at the comprehensive plan, which I feel like is something that the town's house is like our vision for the future of Brighton. And I looked at this area and it's designated as a neighborhood, commercial mixed use, which says that larger areas, blah, blah, blah. It should be compatible with the scale and character of the neighborhood, the smallest and the least intensive of the town's commercial uses. So I feel like, you know, well, I I definitely agree, things are auto centric. The town is trying to, you know, move towards these uses in this comprehensive plan. And I think it's unfair of us to say, let's allow two drive throughs when really we should be taking that plan into consideration and trying to use that as as a guide for moving forward.
Thank you, Pam, for drawing my attention to that, being a new member. I'm not aware of these details and that is a very important detail.
Yeah. The this this to me is I I know Paul and and DeMarco are are very well aware of good design principles. They employ employ those design principles at other projects. And they've completely ignored them for this project. We we have no no good side to any of these buildings. What you're doing to the to the street front on South Clinton is you're making it the backside of a building. You're putting dumpsters on the other side, making that the backside of a building. I I frankly not sure how you could have come up with something worse, frankly. Well, and I apologize, but I
I appreciate your comments.
This is just not acceptable, Paul.
I appreciate your comments and
Sure, well, okay.
You, you and I know that we were, we started this together over seven years ago, looking at this project.
Yeah, and please don't tell me that market conditions are our problem, okay?
That no one's coming up with that. I'm saying that the fate of this development was kind of sealed by a couple of factors that are fixed. The driveway to the north and the driveway to the south, obviously doodle bugs is where it is. The the site plan, if you look at the existing preliminary overall is identical to this plan, save trying to give a drive through with enough queue distance to to be acceptable for a user like a Starbucks cafe. Given the position of the building, the northerly building, the ninety two hundred square foot building, it's in exactly the same position as it was for preliminary.
I I reviewed the previous plan.
Right?
I I reviewed it, okay?
We came up with a driveway queue that wraps around the building. We are proposing a garden wall to help screen the the headlights in the cars. And that building is in the exact same position, so.
So why does it feel so much worse? Why does it feel so much worse?
Well, the forty five hundred square foot building that we have been out to the market and have been trying to lease for a sit down restaurant has gotten no traction. We've had actually had a restaurant across the street go bankrupt twice, both Zeb's and the current building that remodeled the Zeb's and is a restaurant is now vacant. So unfortunately, you know, I do have to respond to the market and we have a lease with Starbucks. We have other users we're talking to for the other drive through that would require pickup or drive through. And these tenants are, they're they're not going to come to this market without those types of provisions. So it kind of hamstrings us and we're not trying to throw good design principles out the window. We're trying
There's there's nothing here.
We required, you required me to put these buildings where they are. You wanted the back facing
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
You wanted
Nobody
The back to face, you did not want parking in front of these buildings.
It was all you, Paul.
It was a
You're not, you're not getting it, you're not understanding. We're not happy with this. We're not happy.
You're not happy, but I'm I'm in conformance, show me where I am not compliant, show me where I
Did you bring a copy of the other of the previous plan? Paul, you are not in conformance, completely out of conformance.
Could I just jump in here, this is Ken Gordonville, if I could?
Thank you, please jump in, Ken, because
So so let me just express sort of a further concern from my perspective. So this is an incentive zoning project that was granted incentive zoning approval by the town board. Depended upon in part a traffic impact study that was based upon one drive through. And it did not envision this configuration and it didn't envision a specific configuration, but it certainly didn't envision two drive throughs. And and we know that drive throughs for food have an extremely high impact. I'm concerned, Paul, that we will need a new traffic impact study. And I'm concerned what that traffic impact study might show. And I'm concerned how it how it may affect the incentive zoning approval, how it might affect the seeker review. And and I don't know how far back in the process something like this may push this project, but I'm concerned about it. Frankly, I just looked, started looking at these documents today. I have not had an opportunity to talk with staff, with Ramsey, with Mike, with Everett about these issues, but I'm concerned and I just want to share that with you. The other thing I'm concerned about is I know that the approved incentive zoning regulations had, among other things, a restriction on hours of operation for businesses within this development. And the earliest that a business can operate in this development, other than daycare is seven AM. There's not a Starbucks I know that doesn't open before seven AM. And there's a, there's a process by which you could apply. Or actually, I'm not even sure it's you, I think it's Starbucks could apply for a conditional use permit to operate earlier. But I I can't say whether that would be granted or not in this neighborhood, I I just don't know. So I've got other concerns that haven't been articulated. Also, I know that there's use size provision. So, you know, total size of this project, seventy seven thousand square feet for the entire project, right? I think we limited in the incentive zoning regulations twelve thousand for food. So you know, we've got an unknown food retail, whatever it is coming in, a restaurant with the drive through on one side, we got twenty one hundred square feet for Starbucks. We have unknown multi use tenants. I'm just concerned what those other uses might be. If we take all of this in, I think doodle bugs plus these two buildings is thirty thousand square feet, right? And that leaves you forty seven thousand for what was supposed to be a bigger medical use. So again, it's a change in the mix of uses here in terms of what the town board was anticipating, which might be more intense and might again impact traffic and other other features of the project. I I don't know if it means that we push ourselves into a supplemental EIS. But I think that's a discussion that I'm going to have to have with staff. So I just, I'm putting that out there, you know?
No, Ken, I I appreciate that. And and we did look at the incentive zoning approvals and and the limitations relative to what was allowed for the specific uses. I I believe I'm in in compliance with them, but you know, certainly open to having discussions with staff and yourself. The the traffic piece is is noted that was raised in a workshop with staff last week. Hence, I had McFarlane Johnson do a traffic memorandum and and a simple IT trip generation comparison. So that that was just submitted yesterday to staff, understanding that, you know, they haven't had time to react to it. The you know, the overall you know, concern I have is is the chairman's kind of you know, disdain with with our approach here. And and it's certainly not something that we're we're trying to upset anyone. We want to advance the development, we want to bring business to Brighton. We don't, we don't do it in a in a manner that we're trying to spite anyone, which it seems like he feels quite quite that way tonight. We worked hard to to bring this property to market with a lot of pitfalls along the way relative to discovery of of, you know, shot rock and and as as Mr. Fader said, you know, the piles that are there, those were a result of us having to deal with very extraordinary site conditions as we got into developing the site. And we're trying to manage the property as best we can. Those prop, those piles will go away as soon as we are able to move forward with with a next phase. It certainly is our desire to do so. We want to bring this property into a a state that is commensurate with the town and and our other properties. We don't, we don't leave properties in in a state of of you know, neglect for any reason other than trying to bring the next phase online. So tho- those piles that are there are materials that will be used for for this next phase. And as I, as I, as I just saw, I think Jeff just had the the previous preliminary overall plan up there. You know, I don't see a major departure other than trying to really for Starbucks in particular, provide a queue lane that is not going to impede traffic and cause traffic concerns. So my plan was to wrap that around the building. And when I do that, I wind up creating a much more generous queue length that winds up allowing traffic not to be impeded on the rest of the plaza. And in in doing so, we recognize that we're bringing vehicles behind the building. And we're proposing a garden wall, which has brick piers every twenty four feet, ornamental aluminum fence and landscaping that would provide that buffer. So you know, there's there's certain requirements that we need to meet with Starbucks. I hear you loud and clear, maybe the other drive through without a tenant, without being able to identify who it is 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 a little bit of concern. And and I I'm I'm recognizing that. So, you know, if 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 we're able to move forward, I'd like to get some positive comments that I can I can work with rather than DeMarco has taken all design principles and thrown them out the window. And this is, you know, laughable at best to the chairman.
Well, what what I heard, what I heard it just so we don't, I don't think, I don't think there's anything personal here, Paul. I think what I heard from from Bill and from all of the board members that commented was they're really not happy with this design. And we're looking for some change. I I will say, I I think it's fair to say the town is excited that you're moving forward. We want to see the project be a success. We want to see the project continue to develop. And we know that DeMarco does build quality projects and we're we're happy you're here in town doing this. But we we want to see, we want to see that project, this plan may be tweaked in a way that makes it more palatable to the board as a whole. I think that's
Um, go back to the previous plan just for a second. You you don't think, looking at this, that the drive through on this plan is much more attractive and blends in better than the one with the 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 road going around it? I mean, it's like there's a, there's a big difference between the two. I I I don't see, just because the building's in the same location, I don't think that really matters. So I think I think maybe you come back with some concepts that are more like this one. And if even if you did have two drive throughs, which I don't know if you need, I would think that the other one could have a similar design to this one, which is, I think, what Pam was saying earlier.
Yeah, my only
I think what I'm saying is that we have some concerns, we're trying to say what you don't like about it, but we're not like, you know, we're not trashing you. We're just, we're giving you feedback.
Well, I I appreciate that. And and my my only concern with this drive through is knowing Starbucks. And we've all seen Starbucks drive throughs during peak. This this meets the town's requirement for queue and it it's probably just shy of what they would want as a standard. I just know that we're going to wind up with vehicles that are going to be tail out into that drive lane that is is my concern with this one. So trying to get some more queue distance for for the Starbucks was was one of the reasons that I wrapped the drive through around that building. Which I think I could do. And, you know, without really bringing a negative element to the development. You know, with landscaping, with good design practices, with a good, you know, edge wall along that right away, I think that it Edge wall along that right away. I think that it that it works. So ultimately, we 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 know the back of these buildings is going to face the right away. We're trying to.
Do with those, Paul, was to bring activity to the street side. You had patios and you had people out closer to the street with this previous plan. And now, you know, you have dumpsters that were in a. In the corners of parking of the parking lot. You've now put dumpsters on your main drive lane. Through your through your development.
Or you've put a wall, which is, you know, blocking what should be an exciting development. We shouldn't have to feel like we have to block this off. We should feel like. This is something that looks nice and we're proud of it. And like Bill said, you know, brings brings life to Brighton.
Does Starbucks have to be on that corner at the north intersection?
Yes, yes, that that we looked at placing them. I I did multiple. I did standalone. I did and we result, we were, we landed on end cap on that north end is where they want to be.
Well, this isn't, this isn't for our group to solve. This, but. My, it's my opinion and see what everybody else ultimately lands on that this is. The combination of two drive-throughs, mirror image buildings. Cars on all sides of your buildings is is not going to fly for me. If there's a way for you to rotate those buildings ninety degrees, push your internal. Drive deeper into the project. And see if you can face those together and solve that drive-through in a different way where you're able to create. Some kind of a space between the buildings. These are very narrow sidewalks in the front.
Paul, a couple of observations. I did want to say. As we have previously talked, you do need to come back and get a new preliminary approval.
Yep, understood that. We we have that application in and we're waiting on comments so that we could. Submit that, understanding the. Reaction here tonight, we'll we'll take a step back and look at this.
And Paul, the other thing is I do not see any way. I could recommend to the board. That a second conditional use permit be issued to a use that we know nothing about. And if we're going to look at Starbucks, we need to know a lot more about them. What Ken Gordon brought up, the hours of operation, its chewing length is problematic. And it could be that it might not be suitable for the site. So I leave that with you to say you might want to look at the design. Of your overall project. Re-look at. The the driveway going into a brickwood. That has changed and re-look at it if this is something you want to do. But right now, I I definitely do not see we have any information to possibly. Review and approve a second conditional use for a drive-through.
Okay, understood.
I have one last thing to say. You need to clean up the site. If you go forward or not.
Yeah, I was I was wondering about that. What's? Why, why, why would, why would, you know, approval of this be a condition of getting that site cleaned up?
The, we have the underground that we want to put in, Bill. And the the location where we'd like to put the sewers and the storms who are. Sanitary and storm in wants to go in before we spread the stone. We wanted to come back with some knowns rather than a lot of unknowns. Right now, we have. We have a known, we have a lease with Starbucks. We have some. Some timelines we're trying to meet for them. And that that piece, if I could finalize that building. Allows us to put underground in and then spread that stone. The top soil that's there, some of it needs to stay on site and we'll we'll stay in that location until I'm fully built out. We don't need all of it. As as you know, we wound up screening, segregating a lot of material that was buried and. You know, as as everyone recognizes, the the last eighteen months has been a bit unusual with. You know. Just activity in construction in general. So it's it's been. You know, kind of a combination of factors that why why it sits like it does today.
How long's it been there, Paul?
July, August of last year, so approximately approximately a year since we finished Doodlebugs. And then we we've been working on trying to lease the back building. We have. Some medical users who want to be twenty thousand square feet on a single floor. We have some medical users who. Are coming to us saying that they could take five thousand square feet. So we're wrestling with what's the right building to build back there. So. We've been reluctant to put the underground in that would interrupt that. So we're just trying to respond to. What we what we foresee is the likeliest opportunities to lease and 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 keep those buildings operational. Which is really why we're we're where we are. We, kind of as you know, we 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 did. A portion of the sidewalks, we've committed to doing the rest of the off-site sidewalks in by. End of June of next year, which we foresee going along with the timing of this development. So.
No, that's excellent. I it's just, I I think we normally have some sort of erosion control plan in place. I know that we were dealing with this very same issue down on Monroe Avenue. And had to have the developer take care of a problem that that was, you know, too much, too much dirt in a pile for too long. And, you know, we we need, I assume Ramsey, there's a similar program here for erosion control or.
Well, it's also that the the piles are supposed to be moved within six months. And we're way past that, so.
And I understand why this happened and, you know, the the difficulties, but. Yeah, I think I don't think that we can sit around and say, well. You know, we'll pretend that that mandate doesn't exist because. You're coming forward with a proposal. Now, I think they are independent. At least that's how the town would view it. They are independent.
Yeah, I can I have to agree with that. And from what I'm hearing from the board. I think you need to look at redoing your preliminary plan. And as the board has discussed with you, come back with some alternative designs and come back on a conceptual level. Would be what I would recommend.
I recognize that, but it's tough to go back to a conceptual level when I had a preliminary overall. So if I come back to a final phase.
No, you would go, Paul, you'd go conceptual and then preliminary. With the design you have, you're not consistent with the preliminary that was approved.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. If I if I went back to my previously approved preliminary overall. I'm I'm not going back to concept. I'm 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 going to go back to that. So. Understand the the comments and and concerns here tonight. But when you bring up concept at this stage, Ramsey, I'm seven years into this project. I'm not going back to concept.
Hey, if you're changing the plan so drastically, I recommend it to you with this board.
And drastic is a strong word when I'm looking at.
It was. You got two drive-throughs. You got lanes operating between the two buildings and the edge of the curb. That's a drastic change. The driveway into Brookwood is changed. It's not consistent with the preliminary, Paul. And we did talk about that.
Yep.
So you can proceed as you like. The board will talk about this later, obviously.
The 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 word dramatic comes up more than drastic to me, but I understand, you know, receiving.
Okay, it's semantics. I I will reel back from that, Paul. I'm just trying to. Get a point across to you that I I am sitting here listening to this. I do see this as problematic and I think you need to really go back to the drawing board. And that is what we're hearing from the board.
Well, we want to solve problems, not create them. So. We'll we'll certainly go back. We'll look at this. We'll go back to our preliminary overall approval. And Ken appreciate the the comments. And, you know, we don't want to to create. Problems both with the existing site and or any future development. So. Understand and appreciate everyone's time tonight and I'll 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 be back in touch, Ramsey. I'll probably try to set up a workshop with you before we we try to come back for this group.
And I'd like to sit in on that workshop too, Ramsey. Okay.
Sure.
In a in a board member should be there.
Tag, you're it.
Doesn't have to be me. It can be me, but.
Tag, you're it, your chair.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just so we can get it moving, Bill?
Yep, yep, no, I I don't want to keep, I don't want to slow it down, but.
No, that's kind of the idea.
Doesn't have to go back to concept, but it's got to go.
Well, you understand what I was saying.
Well, I understand. I understand. Yeah.
I just, you know, have some idea before they engineer the plans up.
Yeah, no, these these, the next level needs to be tissue sketches and.
Yeah, that's my thing, but.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there? Anyone in the audience tonight that cares to address this application?
Do not see anybody.
All right. Let us move on then.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Our next application is ten P O four dash twenty-one, the application of. Trinity Reform Church as owner for preliminary and final subdivision approval. For their property at nine oh nine North Landing Road. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Shorabo at Lantac, representing the Trinity Church this evening. I'll just do a quick overview. The church is located at nine oh nine Landing Road. It's located on the west side of the road. We have Stratton Road to the north and Penders Road to the south. This property is two point six acres in size and zoned R L B. On the property, we have the main church facility and parking lot. And then we also have. A parsonage house that's located at the corner of Stratton Road and Landing Road. The church would like to subdivide that church, that parsonage off. That new lot will be designated as Lot B R dash B one. It's three tenths of acre in size. We have ninety-six foot of frontage on Stratton Road and we're a hundred and fifty feet deep. The lot meets all lot sizes and setbacks, except for one. Back on August sixth, we received an area variance from the zoning board of appeals for section two oh three dash. Two point one C, which is a separation of a hundred feet from a church building. There's no feasible way to meet that separation because of the two existing structures. So we did receive that area variance and. The two buildings, the house and the church are eighty-five feet apart. So we have a a forty-two foot separation between the. New property line and the existing church. The church site will be remained of most of the projects. It's going to exist at around two point three acres in size. The other unique fact about this property, the only other unique fact is there's a large. Easement thirty-five foot in width, which we have a water and sanitary storm easement running through the property that bisects the property. North and south. And we have a driveway that's adjacent to the Stratton House. And we're proposing a ingress egress easement to strangle that driveway. So both the church and the new residents can use that driveway. That easement will be submitted to the town for review. And labeled on the final plat before we file the subdivision. There will be no physical changes to the property. This is just merely a subdivision of property and creating the new lot. So that's a a brief overview of what we're proposing this evening. I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, John. I I read through the town engineers' comments on this. I. Did you receive a copy of those comments? Okay.
They'll post it on the web.
Okay. Ramsey, I I really don't.
No, the only thing that's needed is, um, well, they got the variance. They need an access easement.
Okay. That will be, sounds like it's going to be available for your review.
Yep.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Seemed like it. Board members, any of the board members have any any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, this is John. I have a question.
Go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so is the house. That's be it being subdivided from the church property. So will the house return to? The taxable, you know, rolls for the town or? Is the house going to turn around and be sold or what's what's the? You know, what's the reason?
Great question. That's a question that might be over my head as far as the tax rules, but I believe it's it's being. Cut off to for an economic return to be sold as a single-family residence.
That is my understanding too. They had, their property was not that long ago designated. As a landmark, the church and the school, but not the house. The historical preservation commission. Purposely did not want to include that and it was presented to the commission at that time. It was their intention for financial purposes to sell that house off. And if it is so sold off to someone that is not a not-for-profit entity, they will pay taxes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Jason or David or Julie?
No questions.
No, I. So it's okay.
All right. Pam, are you all set?
I am, yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. This also is a. A public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this application?
I don't see anybody.
All right, thank you. All right, so that was. I believe our last public hearing for the night. I will just repeat that. Application ten P N B one dash twenty-one nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty-six Monroe Avenue. Quickleys has adjourned to our November seventeenth meeting. As has application ten P N B two dash twenty-one. James Tabby for preliminary site plan approval and E-Pot approval for a new home. At eighty-eight thirty Highland Avenue. And I know this wasn't even, this was not for a public hearing. But an open application, tabled application for. Number eight P N B one twenty-one for the University of Rochester for a laser lab. Addition over at two fifty East River Road. So with that, our. Public hearings are concluded for the night. We have a couple of options here, board members. To go back and and review the applications. And make our make our determinations on those and then we'll come in and do our signs. I think there's probably a few folks out there that must be waiting on some of the sign applications that are that are before us.
Uh, there's only the numbers and John Shorabo still on the line.
I see. Okay. All right. So let's go back to uh, the top of our agenda, which, uh, takes us to application ten P O one dash, I'm sorry, ten B O one twenty-one, uh, Canal View Holdings LLC and Reicho Management. This was for the, uh, eleven parking spaces. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Delaney, close it, makes the motion.
I'll second.
Price seconds.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion uh, for this, for this application? Um, Bill, should I take the roll and close?
Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, uh, member four. Julie.
Going forward, yes. I'm really, I have to admit, I'm not really sure what's being asked of me.
We're, we're closing the public hearing.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Wasowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price, the hearing is closed.
Hi. Okay. So Julie, now what we do is we make a motion on the application itself. Typically, you know, for approval or for table. And, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look around and see who might be willing to make a motion on this.
Um, I can make one.
All right.
I move the board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff and that the board approves the application ten P one twenty-one based on testimony given, plans submitted, and the fifteen conditions.
I'll second that.
All right. That, who seconded that?
Uh, Ford.
Ford. Thank you.
Jason slipped in there first, but that's okay.
Now Ford gets it. She tried. Ford gets it for effort.
That I'm following. So I, I, I'll get in that one.
My microphone is awful, so.
I can't hear you.
Jason, I'm gonna give you some headphones for next month.
Well, that's the problem is all I have are lightning headphones and this is.
If we could, before, uh, it goes further, I do have an additional condition that the board may want to consider. And that is the site plan shall be revised to include a bike rack.
Nice. Yes, I, I agree.
Um, Mr. Vader.
I have no problem with that.
Should I call the roll?
All right. So we're moved and seconded, uh, the amendment approved by the mover. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Wasowski.
Hi.
And Ford.
Hi.
Approved with conditions.
All right. Thank you. Our next application is, um, ten P O two twenty-one, same applicant Canal View Holdings, uh, LLC and Leo J Roth Companies for the, uh, generator to be located on the backside of seven seventy-seven Canal View Boulevard. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move we close the public hearing.
Babcock Steiner makes the motion.
I'll second. Delaney.
Delaney, thank you. Ford, to close the hearing.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
The hearing is closed.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to, for this application? David.
All right. I move that the board adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff and the board approves the application ten P O two twenty-one based on testimony given, plans submitted, and the seven conditions.
I'll second. Give it to Jason.
Jason, you seconded.
Yeah.
Babcock Steiner seconds.
All right. Uh, we're all set with the, with the condition.
No, I, um, got considerations to offer.
All right. Okay. Please call the roll.
Approved with conditions. Member Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Lane.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Ford.
Hi.
Approved with conditions.
Great. Thank you all. So that does bring us to the application ten P O three dash twenty-one, application of, uh, nineteen twenty-five South Clinton LLC uh, for final site plan approval phase two uh, at nineteen oh five to nineteen twenty-five South Clinton Avenue.
I have a motion for that. I move the board tables application ten P O three twenty-one based on the testimony given and plans submitted and the twenty-eight items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
Okay, moved. Anybody second? Was that Jason? All right, we can, we have conversation on this before we vote.
I, I just want to, um, offer too that I will offer, um, uh, the condition that the site plan shall be revised to address the comments and concerns that were discussed with the planning board as an additional condition. And then you can discuss it. I just want to put that on the table that that is, uh, pretty clear.
David and Jason, are you good with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Ramsey, i- in the end, is tabling this what we should be doing? Um, we're, we're essentially sending him back to, you know, he says he's not going to go to con- concept. But if he goes back and does something that's a little bit more in the ballpark of his preliminary approval, that's essentially a new application. And in the end, does this remain a valid application? If he's, if he's gonna change it substantially enough for us to approve it, it's gonna take a a pre- modification to preliminary. And then does it really come back that we would be reviewing this particular application? My, my question is, do you, do you deny this application as a final site plan approval? Um, or is tabling it?
I have, um, I, let me give you a little background.
Ramsey, before, before you answer, I don't know if you saw my text, but I've been asking you to take a look at the chat I sent you.
I don't do, uh, cell phones during meetings, Ken. Sorry.
I know. That's why I sent you the chat. I sent you a chat.
Jeff, you should let me know. Okay, go ahead, Ken. Sorry.
Now, if you could take a look at your chat on Zoom from me right now.
I will try to do that.
He didn't send it to me, so. Nope, just sent it to Ramsey.
So on this issue, Bill, that's why I wanted to take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, let me, uh, go back to what I was saying.
Yep, thanks.
This application came in. Um, we did meet with, uh, the applicant. Uh, told them all their problems. The application was made. I did at that meeting, uh, inform them that it was, uh, not consistent with the preliminary approval. And that they would need to make a new application for consideration by the board, which they have made. But I wanted them to go through tonight because they need to hear it from you, not from me, but from you.
So what?
Tom and I would table that so they at least know your concerns. And then I would suggest um, that they withdraw it because, uh, it still doesn't have preliminary approval. It's a final plan that doesn't, doesn't meet and it's a condition of this approval that they got applied for a new preliminary, which they have done. You want to do it differently, you're more than welcome to deny it without prejudice. There is an application uh, pending for them to come back next month. And I'd be glad to talk with them about the various conditions, um, that are in the report right now. And that is up to, uh, you folks with what direction you would like to take.
Okay. I, I, I think either way, whether, you know, knowing that this is gonna have to be a revised, this will require a revised preliminary and that becomes a separate application.
It is going to be a separate application, a new application.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so with the, that thought, they have made that application. They're gonna need to resubmit. Um, so in the sense that the comments and the reports, um, he can read them, he can see them.
Yeah.
You can deny this as, without prejudice. I just don't have findings for you to do that. And the findings would be, if you were, was that the proposed plan is not consistent with the preliminary site plan approval that was granted for this project.
I will, I, I will ask the rest of the board members to just consider, I would be personally satisfied knowing that they are coming back in with a preliminary application, which that preliminary application may need to be modified based on the comments that they're gonna get out of this. And then this particular application would be with, withdrawn. Uh, it would accomplish the same thing I'm, I'm trying to achieve.
I think the concern of the town attorney that there is a timeframe that he is concerned about um, regarding the, uh, time that the board needs to make a decision.
Yeah, I just counted days. So, um, I think we'd be okay. I, I, I just wanted to call, call a timeout and have you read that Ramsey. So what the code says.
Ken, we have tabled it?
Yeah, cause anyway, my, let me, if I may, uh, with the code requires you, the board, to make a decision, um, within forty-five days of when the secretary presents to you a final site plan application. Um, my email says that, um, the board rece- the board was sent this by the secretary on October seventh, which was thirteen days ago. Our next meeting is November seventeenth, which is twenty-eight days from today. Um, so we would be within that forty-five day period because it's forty-one days out from now, uh, from when we got it. Um, so I think we don't, we're okay tabling it. I just needed a moment to be able to do that math. So I think we're okay tabling it. I think it's also appropriate if you want to deny it to deny it, but, um, the, either one, either one works.
Either one accomplishes what I think needs to happen. I'm, and I'm, and I'm fine with the motion the way that it is, but I just wanted to ask people's thoughts.
I don't care either way. I can, I can, you know, withdraw that motion and we can do another one. I mean, you guys understand these nuances better than I do.
I just was concerned about the timing. I think you're fine, David, with, uh, tabling. You're within the forty-five days at the next meeting, but at the next meeting, at the next meeting, we need to make a decision on it, either grant.
Okay, let me ask you this. If the application is not complete and we deem it not complete, do we still have the forty-five day limit hanging over us?
I think so, yeah. Um, because I think it was submitted to, I mean, the, the way the code reads, it's forty-five days from when the board receives it from the secretary, the secretary, Rick, on your behalf, actually emailed it out, um, thirteen days ago to the board. So, uh, yeah, I think, I think we need to make that decision. What can, as you know, Ramsey, what can extend that time period is consent of the developer or the withdrawal of that application by the developer. Um, so the developer on its own can say, I would like the matter adjourned. I would like you to hold off our, you know, I would like to agree to give the board more time to think about my application. All of that's fine. So I think we're fine with the table in, David.
Okay. Pam, did you have a question or a comment?
I guess my only comment is if we table it, I, I just don't want to feel like next month if they come back and it's like better, but not perfect, that we feel pressure because of this time period to approve it. I don't know if that would be the case, but like, this isn't good. So I don't want to feel like they can just make some small changes and we're like, yeah, that's fine. We just want to get this done.
Then that would lead you to denying it without prejudice for the reason that it's inconsistent with the, uh, preliminary plan, I think would kind of be the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
I would.
And we would need David and, um, Julie to withdraw their motion.
Yes, that's right.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my motion.
And I move that we deny this without prejudice because it is inconsistent with the, uh, preliminary plan.
I'll second.
Dr. Lane?
Yep.
Any, any further comments?
That was denied without prejudice, right?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Is there any? Please say, say if you're not comfortable with this or if you're in agreement. Feel free, there's.
I don't know. I think it might be a little bit cleaner way to go.
I was just about to say the same thing, David. I think this is the cleaner way to go.
Yep. John, Jason, either of you have.
Hey, I'm, I'm fine either way.
So this, so this mean, this is John, does this mean the, the clock, the forty-five day clock will start ticking when they come up with a new plan or something like that?
Yep, we have met the forty-five day clock by denying it without prejudice today. They can make a new application. Um, and once you receive it from the secretary of the planning board, the forty-five day clock starts on that. But it's only for finals, so not on preliminaries.
Yeah, okay. All right.
But I will say this, this becomes interesting, Ken. Um, and I, I, you know, this is opening up things, um, but he, uh, probably is, um, applying for preliminary and final together with, just commonly done, which means we probably can't continue that practice because it will take longer than forty-five days to get through it in a usual situation. So we do have to talk about that, but right now that's for our later conversation. Should I take the call? Uh, member Ford.
Hi.
Sowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Deny without prejudice.
Me, me too.
Oh, uh, member Price, sorry. Apologize. Right, apologize.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about a denial? Because in like my four years, that was the first denial. Do we have to have a reason like how David stated that it was inconsistent with the preliminary site plan? Do we have to have a reason?
Yes.
What about if you're just voting no? Like not, you're not, um, wha- whatever, making the motion, but you're just voting no.
Do you, you? Oh, I, I'm not sure I can answer that one.
You know, like, it's like somebody votes to approve a, a something and then I don't want to. Can I just say? You know, like, it's like somebody votes to approve a, a something and then I don't want to. Can I just say no? Or do I have to have a reason?
You do not. The only reason we articulate a reasoning, Pam, is if we have someone, either developer or the public or somebody affected by the project challenged the decision of the planning board, we want to have a record that someone down the line, a judge, I, I always think of that scenario. A judge can look at and try to understand what it is that the planning board was thinking when it either granted or denied. It's the same reason we make findings.
So then what if, what if somebody voted to approve, somebody seconded it? And then a greater majority just voted no, 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 no.
Nothing wrong with that.
But then there's not a reason given.
No, Pam, it's, it's the motion that's made. The person that makes the motion makes the findings. And then the members can either vote for the motion or not.
Okay. Just curious because it's never happened since I've been here.
Frankly, I'm not sure it's happened in my twenty two years.
No, it's happened a few times, but not very often.
Yeah, it's rare, it's rare.
Okay, thanks.
It's Ramsey, typically because somebody doesn't show up and they just kind of leave the application hanging.
Yeah. He just don't follow through.
Right.
And this one is there's the grounds because it is not consistent with the preliminary. That's my feeling, so. But the, the project has been denied without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. Now, just so everybody knows, denied without prejudice does allow the applicant to come back in with a, a new application immediately. Now, denied in other circumstances does have time delays before an applicant can come back in, doesn't it? So the, the without prejudice has, has.
Yeah, there is. It depends on the type of application. I couldn't answer that. But it does allow them to come back and I think that was the intention of the board.
It is, yeah, we just, we don't want, you know, I'm, I'm okay with Starbucks and I'm okay with the knowing that there's going to be a drive through. And if he comes back with a couple of, couple of them, it just has to be better designed. But I'm, I'm not looking to slow down Starbucks specifically. All right, we have it looks like about five or six signs. Are we ready to do those?
We have, we have another application.
We do?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Yeah, so that would be ten P oh four dash twenty one. Trinity Reform Church at preliminary final subdivision at nine oh nine North Landing Road. Forgot.
All right. I'll move that we close a public hearing. The board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff. And the board approves the application ten P O four twenty one based on testimony given, plan submitted and the six conditions.
Can I second?
Ford seconds.
Wow, we can do that? Why aren't we always doing that?
Yeah, so we're moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ramsey, this is pretty straightforward, right? There's no. Yep, okay, please call.
Price?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Sowsky?
Aye.
And Ford?
Aye.
I get everyone? Yes, okay.
I've noticed something weird. When I make a motion when we're on Zoom, my arms move around. Not sure what that means.
I'm not sure. We don't see it on the screen.
Oh, I, I don't know. I can see it on the screen, so you're maybe not really.
Well, yeah, I'm not paying attention to you, I guess.
Some weird.
It comes too concerning. We'll let you know about some signs.
All right. So is this sixteen twenty seven?
Jeff, you want to talk about these a little bit?
Yeah, so this is sixteen twenty seven. It's a sign on Monroe Ave. It's going to planning board first, so if it's approved, it would need to be conditioned on the approval of the historic preservation commission because it's a historic building.
Okay.
The rock blooms sign.
What, what is a rock blooms? Is it some florist or something?
They're selling lights and things like that for plants.
It's a hydroponic?
I don't know. I don't think that they stated that in there.
It's better than the Wonder Nail sign, so.
That's true.
This is at the end of my street. All right.
Mine as well.
Yeah, we live on the same street, Julie.
I did not realize that.
Yeah.
How close is that? How close is that logo to the city of Rochester? Flower of the city of Rochester logo. I just can't see it that well.
Oh, not enough, not enough that we're going to get sued.
Ah, okay, that's better. Not that close.
Not our problem.
Well, it only becomes our problem if we approve it.
Okay, what was the, so this is, we actually approved this first, right?
Yep, with a condition, conditioned on the historic preservation commission approval.
All right. For application sixteen twenty seven Rock Blooms. I move approval based on, as submitted.
Second.
That was Babcock Steiner seconded.
And the motion, the motion, I'm sorry, Ramsey. The motion is to approve it as submitted, subject to approval of the historic preservation commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, so amended?
Member Price?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Sowsky?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Conditions?
The next sign is at seven, seven, seven Canal View. It's on the, the building where they're going to be doing the modifications. It is as presented. It was approved as presented by the architecture board.
All right. Okay. So I guess I'll move application sixteen twenty eight be approved as presented and recommended by the ARB.
I'll second. Delaney?
Ford?
Aye.
Sowsky?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
The next sign is sixteen twenty nine. It's for Crown Rust Protection as well as the HPC custom shop creations. It's on the corner of West Henryetta Road and Brighton Henryetta Common. Maybe another, they have two signs here and then there's another building on the property that they're also putting the sign on.
Okay. And ARB approved as presented?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? I'll move that we approve as presented and approved by the ARB.
Ford second.
Thank you, Ford. Member Price?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Sowsky?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next sign is for sixteen thirty. It's the same as the other one where it needs to go to the HPC for review. It's replacing the current trade reform church sign. Yep.
What is that a picture of?
It's a rooster and then.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, and they, they did remove the email address from the sign, so that's no longer there. Or the website address.
The website's coming off?
Yep.
All right, the ARB did approve this as presented minus the.
The, the.
No, it needs to get HPC a review and approval.
Okay. So when it, when it goes to HPC, it does not require ARB?
No.
I see, okay. Is everybody okay with the colors on this?
I don't know what the rooster is, but that's just me.
Yeah, the, the rooster does not match the Tottenham Hotspur rooster, so I think they're okay with that. Doesn't have a soccer ball on it.
I feel like it's hard to be critical of this when we just approved that last one.
It's really close though, John, and that might be reason to disapprove it, speaking as an Arsenal fan.
There you go.
Oh, boy. Okay.
And, yeah, I'm fine with it.
I'll, I'll move approval as presented pending approval from the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second.
Laney second. Member Ford?
Aye.
Sowsky?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Yep, and then the next one is sign sixteen twenty five. It's for the U of R Medical Center in Brighton. They're removing an old awning to have it on there and installing a new sign in a different location.
Okay. This is set back quite a ways from West Henryetta Road.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve as presented and approved by the ARB.
Ford second.
First and seconded.
Jeff, go ahead. You can do it. You can call.
Call the roll first, Ford?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Or Sowsky?
Aye.
Delaney?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
The sign is moved and approved.
Right.
And that's it.
I think that's it.
I think that's it. Okay.
Julie?
Good job, Jeff.
Julie, did you get, did you get your cheat sheet for motions?
I don't know.
It's probably in her folder. Maybe I should email that out to everyone again.
That would be lovely.
It's useful if you ever want to make a motion.
Tired.
She, at the last meeting, she did make a motion. I wonder if she used it, but I will send out the sheet.
That would be, I would appreciate that. Thank you. And I apologize.
Do you have questions? Give me a call.
For my learning, for my learning curve.
It makes me look competent. Really, I'm just reading.
You've already been doing it for thirty years.
Just gonna say, I wouldn't know I still haven't done it.
But Julie, I'm, I'm happy. I, I sent you a chat. I don't know if you saw it, Julie, but I'm happy.
I did, I did. I, I, I've got my iPad going in my, my laptop and so I just, I will respond to you and I thank you.
Yep, sure, happy to do that.
And Bill, where do you live? You live in Sylvan?
Yeah, five, six, five, no, no, three oh five. We're the last house before the town pool, the yellow house on the end.
I've met you and your wife, was it architect? No, yes, I've met you. We had the little Havaneese, the black and white dog. I've, I remember.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, hi.
Hi. Stop.
Put it worth on one of your neighbors. I don't live on your street, but.
Ramsey still walks by every day.
Every day. I live across from the park. Three generations worth of rose lawn.
Wow, wow.
I'm not allowed in Central Brighton.
Hey, Bill, I gotta, we gotta get going. I'll let you guys go, but Bill, have a picture of a brownie meeting in your living room.
Really?
Yeah, my mother-in-law was a brownie or whatever, bluebird or whatever they were called. And there's pictures from them hanging out in your house.
All right.
So I have to try to get her to dig them up sometime.
When you, when you can, love to see them.
Yep, that's what retirement's about.
Taking off, guys. I look forward to it.
All right.
All right, everyone. Thank you.
Everybody.
Jeff, nice job. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.